...of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, June 6th, please stand for our invocation led by our chaplain Percy Harris, Mobile Fire Rescue Department, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father in our God, we come to this empty vessel before a full fountain with Thanksgiving in our hearts, knowing that you're too wise to make a mistake, knowing that you watched over us all night long as we slumbered and as we slept, and you saw fit to let us wake up to see another morning. So we thank you for all things being as well as they are. Would you pray with me? Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And forgive us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prokof, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So good to have you here. We do have some special guests in the audience, and I don't know if you could hear like we could up here, but there was a very special, well, I've got some fun things with lights going on here. Thank you for the drama. But we have a special guest here this morning, and we could certainly hear the special little voice as we were saying the Lord's Prayer.
Yes.
She knew every word. We'll be introduced to this young lady very shortly. We do want to thank everyone for coming this morning again to our council meeting. The rules of our council are very simple. We ask everyone to please turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to speak. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and then that's your indication to go ahead and begin wrapping things up. A lot going on in our city, as always. This weekend is absolutely chock-full of events, starting off with Lowda. That's the second Friday of every month. If you have not attended Lowda, come on down. The weather's perfect for it. There are a lot of special events. The galleries, the retail shops, restaurants are all open. Food trucks will be on hand, wine tasting, special sampling, so it'll be a wonderful evening on Friday for the entire family, so please make your plans to come on downtown and see what Lowda is all about. Also, if you've ever been at the Battle for the Paddle or the Paddle for the Battle, whichever way you want to look at it, it's certainly a battle. I've done it before, and I can tell you, they don't want me back there again on anybody's team. But the Magic Dragons will be out at USS Alabama Park for the Fuse Boat or the Dragon Boat Races. More than 1,500 paddlers will be out there, all again to help raise money for the Fuse Project. They do a wonderful job. Even if you're not part of this big battle, come on out and watch. It's really fun to see these boats in action and see the teams as they really and truly battle it out. It is very competitive, and then all of the proceeds go to multiple charitable events and needs of organizations throughout the city. So thanks to the Fuse Project for putting this on again. And then I also want to ask you all to join us, if you're available, on Saturday for a leadership seminar to focus on the importance of having a diverse leadership team and how to build and manage such a team. I'll be participating on a panel along with our municipal judge Carlos Spindly. Tim Wills, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama, will be one of the guest speakers. This will be held on Forest Hill Road. It's hosted in conjunction with the Office of Leadership Strategies. So come on over and join us for this leadership seminar on Saturday. It all begins at nine o'clock, runs through one o'clock. On our agenda today, we have, again, more and more, as we do every week, items dealing with work on parks, on drainage, road improvements, traffic improvements. We also have some more items dealing with the Pay As You Go program, where we are working with the county to resurface more roads within the city of Mobile. So we are very thankful for our capital improvement funds that make a lot of this possible, and as well as our partnership with the county on the Pay As You Go. We'll begin seeing more resurfacing very soon with the Pay As You Go program. So in actuality, it looks like we're resurfacing year-round, and it's because we are. So a lot of good news in the city of Mobile. We are very grateful. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lambert, and we will continue on with the agenda. Lisa.
A pool of minutes of May 30th. So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. Good to see everybody here. There is a lot of great news, Madam President, and some of that has to do with a proclamation that we're going to read right now. And at this time, I would ask Lisa Gould, who is the interpreter, to please bring Sam Fiebelman and Ryan Markopolis to the podium. This is for, the proclamation is for the Alabama Association of the Deaf. Whereas the Alabama Association of the Deaf will hold its 2017 Biennial Conference, continuing the legacy, celebrating our unified deaf community on June 8th through 10th, 2017, in Mobile, Alabama, at the Renaissance Ripley View Plaza Hotel. And whereas, the purpose of the Alabama Association of the Deaf is to promote, protect, and preserve the rights and quality of life of the deaf and the hard-of-hearing individuals in Alabama. And whereas, this Biennial Conference will attract a variety of people from all over the state of Alabama, such as leaders in the deaf community, educators, deaf young leaders, sign language interpreters, parents of deaf children, and service providers. Now therefore, we, the mayor, and the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim June 8th through 10th, 2017, as Alabama Association of the Deaf Days in Mobile, and urge all of our citizens to join with us in this momentous occasion, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, this eighth day of June, 2017, signed by the mayor and all city council representatives. Congratulations.
And before Ryan gets back up to her seat, I just want to let everybody know that Ryan is the daughter of John Peavy, who is a former councilman here and worked with us for many, many years. So John, thank you for bringing Ryan in and for helping to set this up.
This time, I'd ask Reverend Isabella Devada to please come to the podium, and this is a proclamation having to do with Parents' Day. Whereas, parents should the character of those who will build the future of our nation, and Parents' Day is commonly a tribute to the hard work and sacrifice of parents. And whereas, healthy, God-centered families are the foundation for a healthy and well-adjusted city and nation. And whereas, the city encourages all parents, adoptive parents, and foster parents, to commit themselves to creating a nurturing and loving home environment. And whereas, parents should utilize federal, state, and local faith-based resources to help parents as they strive to raise children of moral conviction and character. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th mayor of the City of Mobile, Alabama, do hereby proclaim July 23rd, 2017, as Parents' Day in the City of Mobile. Congratulations.
Honorable Mayor Sandy Stimson, council members, ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Reverend Devadi, Director of American Clergy Leadership, sponsoring Parents' Day this year, coordinating it this year. Thank you for giving me opportunity to say a few words. Abraham Lincoln once said, "The rune of a nation starts from the home of its people." Once family breakdown becomes an epidemic, then it affects the nation. The virtues of honesty, truthfulness, standard of excellence, moral purity, moral integrity, working hard and earning an honest living, all these virtues can be learned at home. We cannot help social agency, government agency, or churches, or even schools, to teach our children the values that only can be exemplified by parents at home, in a home environment. The vision of Parents' Day started with a man from Korea, a Korean pastor. He arrived in America in 1971. He saw a great, great nation. America has, he saw America as a great nation of divine destiny and divine calling, but also he saw that if this great nation loses or separates herself from the values and the love and the principle of his creator, she will lose her strength and she will fall into the hand of her enemies. The vision of Parents' Day has been birthed. He saw that by strengthening family, the nation can be strengthened. So the vision of Parents' Day was initiated, and he foresaw that the true Parents' Day will be the day that a nation can honor. However, when it was signed into law in 1994, by the both houses, it becomes Parents' Day. We are very grateful. We celebrate that. Congratulations, Mom and Dad. We are very thankful for mothers and fathers and the efforts that they make in not just building a life, but also building a nation. However, I would like to remind us that America is great, not because of her own greatness, but because the love and ocean of mercy of our Creator really held it together. So in that said, I believe that the problems that we have in our city, as well as in the capital city, could be resolved through becoming a bigger person ourselves, to become a spiritually bigger person by taking ownership of the true love of God, and then we become, I mean, you become the solution, and you become the miracle maker yourself. And I would like to thank you. I thank you, our mayors. And I brought a book that was the, that book is a biography of Dr. Moon. He initiated the Parents' Day, my spiritual father and my spiritual mentor. I read that over hundreds of humanitarian peace projects. I served as a missionary across the globe, and I testify to that. Also, I would like to offer this to the president of the committee. It's one of the speeches that Lady Dr. Moon, she traveled across America three, four times, fifty-city tour, twelve-city tour, again, another to Hawaii, Alaska, so I would like to offer that.
If you'll give that to Ms. Lambert, she will make sure I get it.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
To continue on, I'd like to compliment Team Mobile for landing Amazon. I think everybody in the city understands the significance of that. It's going to be an incredible project, and will create hundreds of jobs for our community. As everyone knows, Amazon is one of the most successful and innovative companies in the world. We're excited that they have chosen Mobile for their first location. I think we should also point out that it's only because we are the port city that we have been able to successfully land Walmart and Amazon, and we're grateful for the work that our Port Authority does and that all those that work in the port do to make, to made this happen. And I think that there's more to come, and it's just very, very exciting for the eyes of the world to be on Mobile, not only in aviation, but in distribution and logistics. So lots of more things to happen there. On a more local level, Delta Bike Project, who diligently worked to promote better biking in the city of Mobile, they have put a bike parking spot on, in downtown Mobile. They're upgrading it. It's the corner of Dolphin and Joakim Streets, and the city has implemented a new green paint scheme to delineate the bike parking space and install bumper blocks to ensure safety from vehicular traffic. Again, we're just grateful for the biking community, for what they do to promote biking and make sure this is in the front of our minds with everything that we do from a transportation standpoint, to make sure that biking becomes a viable mode of transportation for us. Just a short update on the YES Initiative. We'll be giving updates on this throughout the summer. As you know, we have 175 youth that have been hired for the City of Mobile and the City of Gulf Shore's hospitality industry. The top candidates were offered these positions this past week, and they're undergoing an application process, which, well, they underwent an application process as part of their hiring. And as part of their six-week employment, two weeks will be included of training. And the idea is that we want to make sure that they're properly trained so they're successful in their first jobs. So we're grateful for the work that Anitra Henderson has done, that the Mobile Police Department has done, that the mayor of Gulf Shores is doing, and our partnership with the Mobile County Public School System in South Alabama to make this effort come about. And we look forward to telling you that, what unfolds as they engage in their new jobs. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now I'm going to call on Councilwoman Richardson, who has a special introduction and proclamation to deliver.
Thank you, Madam President. I am excited today because we have our young special guest in our midst this morning that are invited. This is little Miss Dylan Johnson. I don't know whether, I don't think she's going to be able to reach this microphone up here.
Can we?
So can we, can we have?
Oh, there's a step. There's a step.
There's a step?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, they have already improvised for me. Thank you. I want to make it. Yeah, there we go. There we go.
Is that going to work?
Okay. She is a... Okay. Hold on. Hold on, Dylan.
Why don't we bring her over here?
Yeah, this corner, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want her to be heard now.
She could come right here.
Yeah, Dylan, why don't you come over here to this corner?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. Hold it, hold it. Dylan, hold on, hold on.
Step up.
And get her situated. I believe we have a good PA system here. While she's doing that, let me just say that she, she is the valedictorian of her kindergarten class. It was twenty-eight of them, and she surfaced as the smartest one in her class. So what I did, I sent her and all of the students of a certificate of recognition, and it says, "Congratulations on graduating from the kindergarten class of Mr. Clausier, Jonathan Clausier, from the Trinity Lutheran School and Child Development Center. On behalf of the mayor and city council and citizens of the city of Mobile, it is an honor and pleasure to extend to you best wishes for much success in all your future endeavor." So I sent this to her, and I sent that to all of the twenty-eight class members. She had to give her speech as the valedictorian. So I want her to come and share with us the words, the wise words that she gave to the people during graduation. So come on, Dylan, and tell us what you got. Take the time. I know we've got all these grown people here looking at you.
Yeah, why don't you come down with your mom? Yeah.
You want mom to do it with you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yay. Okay, I, I, hold it, hold it, hold it. I have a few words for Dylan, and I hope the children everywhere can, can hear what I have to say. Just a few words. I'm impressed with your, with her intelligence, and I want her to know that, the more, Dylan? Dylan? Yes. The more you know, the further you go. The more you learn, the more you earn. If you want to make a lot of money, then you have to learn a lot, because they don't pay for ignorance. We are so impressed with your ability to learn and express yourself. We are very proud of you. We're glad to have you down here with us today. So I want to close this out. I got this? So I want, I also want to get the calculator. What I did, I have attitude up here, and I assigned a numerical value to each one of these words up here, that A represents a one, and Z twenty-six. So I put these numbers under here, that each one of these alphabets will represent. I want somebody to add this up. One hundred. My point is, if your attitude is right, you will always succeed. You will always make a one hundred. You have the smile on your face, keep smiling, don't let nobody stop you from smiling. Keep that good attitude, keep your grades up, and it's untold where you would go in life. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, okay.
Dylan, come stand right here, sweetie. Put her in front. Look right there.
Stand right.
Right here, Dylan.
Come over here.
Come on, stand over here. Can we see?
You got it?
Thank you. Mom, one more.
No more.
Here we are.
Good. All right.
For those of you that couldn't hear, when we were reciting the Lord's Prayer, I could hear Jalen's voice over everybody else's in the whole auditorium. So we know that she not only is smart and talented and valedictorian, but she's being brought up properly. Having one other thing, one other thing I'd like to point out is that the City of Mobile and Alabama Power Company are teaming up to do something differently regarding the recycling of tree limbs that are cut from the trees around the city and in our parks. We have come up with a joint location where these limbs will be delivered and mulched. That location is in the Orange Grove Community Housing Project area. It's at what was known as the corner of Fisher Alley and Marion Street, which is at the northernmost part of Orange Grove Properties. The woody debris is ground into mulch on-site rather than being transported to a landfill. This mulch will be used to landscape our public right-of-ways, our local parks, and other public properties to help beautify the community. Ultimately, there'll be a savings of about $50,000 to the city in both tipping fees and materials for beautification projects. And once again, it's just another collaborative effort that the city works on, trying to work with our companies to not only save money, but also to make our community a better place to live. Thank you, Madam President.
Well, Dylan is certainly a hard act to follow, but I have a proclamation for Feeding the Gulf Coast, and if Kathy Poe, the president and CEO, would join me? Whereas, Feeding the Gulf Coast will offer lunches for school-aged children in local communities through the Federal Summer Food Service Program on Tuesday, June 6th, which is Friday through August 4th, 2017. And whereas nationally, nearly 22 million children receive lunch assistance during the school year, but less than 18% of those children receive a meal on a typical summer day, except for the Federal Summer Food Service Program, who provides meals to chronically hungry children. And whereas, all of the materials and food needed for the programs provided through Feeding the Gulf Coast, which delivers meals daily to each site. And whereas, in Alabama last summer, the program reached 8,570, that's nearly 8,600 children, by providing almost 230,000 meals and 65,900 snacks, with a projection this summer to reach 10,000 children by serving 250,000 meals and 70,000 snacks. So now therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council and Mayor Stimson, do proclaim Tuesday, June 6th, 2017, as Summer Food Service Program Day in the city of Mobile, and we ask everyone to join us in extending appreciation to Feeding the Gulf Coast for the vital services that they provide. So would you please round, round of applause? And Kathy, I'm going to give you this proclamation and ask if you would to just say a few words about the program. I know y'all are kicking off today.
We are. Thank you so much, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the council, thank you all so much for what you do to serve our city, and we're very happy today is our summer kickoff for the summer feeding program. We have added additional sites. We have over 200 sites that will be serving children meals here in Mobile County and throughout our service area. And I wanted to introduce Kim Lachas. She's the director of the child serving feeding program at Feeding the Gulf Coast, and she's going to tell us a little bit about it as well.
Good morning, everyone. In the time it took President Gregory to read that proclamation, I was able to find the three... the three closest sites that a child could get a summer feeding meal at this summer. Um, our goal at Feeding the Gulf Coast is to, um, end child hunger in the City of Mobile and across the Gulf Coast. Um, there's a very important resource that we wanna share with you, um, a way that children and families can find meals this summer. It's very easy, it's free. Uh, families can text FOOD to eight seven seven eight seven seven. That will then prompt you to put in your zip code or your address, and it will give you the three sites closest to, um, your location. Um, you could also visit the Feeding the Gulf Coast website. Um, it's very important for us that that word get out. It is unacceptable, and we are not going to have hungry children in our community this summer. So, please help us spread the word about that texting service. Um, and thank you, um, to the president, council, and the mayor for, um, having us here today.
Thank you.
Madam President, as you are taking photos, I would like to, um, also ask them, is it possible that they can, uh, send us a PDF file to the city clerk office? Uh, this is a serious need in our community, and I thank you so much for your words. Um, about, I think it was last year or the year before last, um, woke up one morning, and a young man was coming down by my gate, and, uh, he was saying, "I'm hungry." It was in the summertime. I've been invited to students, um, that attend school throughout the year, is able to eat, you know, at school time, but summertime is kinda hard for them, some of them to find some food, you know, and eating candy bars and et cetera. It kinda hurt my heart, and, you know, went in my pocket and gave me some money. Unfortunately, he went to the Dollar General store and brought some other stuff, but, you know, we are having a hard times with that, especially in the community there I represent. You know, many times I have people come to me in my community, my district, and they say, you know, "I'm hungry," you know, and I appreciate all the hard work that you all have done. I would do all I can do to spread the word. And, but again, if you all have a PDF file, please send that to our city clerk office, where we can put that in our newsletter and also on Facebook and et cetera, because that word need to get around, because there is very, uh, very, very, very need in our communities, and especially ones that's up here that we represent and everything. Again, thank you so much for your hard work.
Absolutely, thank you, councilman.
Okay, you ready? Okay, uh, you got your proclamation?
Put your camera.
Thank you so much.
If, if we're gonna do a press release on this proclamation, it would be great to have all that information in it. So, it's all together. Be nice. Great.
Adoption of agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for waiver of noise ordinance on July fifteenth on Wellington Street.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings today, it's a public hearing to consider the application of Mary Taylor doing business as Elegant Knights Transportation for a transportation service.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, please come to the podium. All right, the public hearing is over.
Public hearing, today is a public hearing to determine if the structures at eleven oh five, eleven oh seven, eleven oh nine, eleven eleven, eleven thirteen, and eleven fifteen, also known as eleven ninety-five, at which street, are public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any of these, please come to the podium. These on Edward Street. All right, with that, then the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Nicole Iell.
I think it's been resolved. I know it's been resolved.
Okay.
And I wanna thank engineering for working with that citizen who had a long-term problem. So, thank you.
Ordinance is held over sixty-four zero twenty-three, rezoned property at forty-five fourteen and forty-five eighteen Dolphin Island Parkway from R one to B three.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Small?
No, I say some move.
Second.
All right, discussion on this rezoning?
Uh, yes, Madam President.
Go ahead. Uh, ma'am, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, okay. Mr. Small, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Madam President, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the, um, residents and the political group, and also the Oliver's for coming down on last week, um, during the, uh, public hearing. Um, the rule, uh, governor amendment of the zoning ordinance is found in section sixty-four dash nine of the city code. That rule states that a casual change or amendment to the chapter would be detrimental to the achievement of zoning objectives, and that it is the plebiscite policy to amend the chapter only when one or more of the following conditions prevail. One, error. Two, change in conditions. Three, increasing the need for site for business or industrial, industry, excuse me, for subdivision of land. Last week's presentation by the applicant did not, in my opinion, demonstrate that any of the following criteria were satisfied. In fact, the applicant stated several times that he has utilized his property as an arena for boat sales for over forty years, and that he does not intend to change the use of the property in the future. Uh, therefore, in my conclusion that the amendment, uh, to the zoning ordinance is not warranted. And, um, and, you know, even though that Mr. Oliver does run a good and successful business, it's just not warranted, and today I would be voting no.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor of rezoning this property on Dolphin Island Parkway? Please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
All right, the rezoning does not pass. Ms. Lambert?
Resolutions held over twenty-one three one one. Authorized contract of ACOM Technical Services for Pago County Commission District Two.
Some move.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Small?
I believe that, um, Madam Clerk, that we skipped someone that wanted to recognize Councilman Richardson that has signed up on the, you want to...
That was, that was...
It was her. Okay, I apologize. All right, thank you.
Twenty-one three thirteen, authorized contract with Sunset Contracting for access improvements on Cottage Hill Road at Carrot, Carrot Hills.
So move?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank Traffic Engineering and the Engineering, um, Department for getting this here for the council's approval, hopefully today. It's been a long time coming. This is an issue that came to the city's attention when residents came down as a business was developed across from Carrot Hills. The, um, intersection was studied and a solution provided and funds made available. So, again, this is something that will be some construction along Cottage Hill in a very busy corridor near the Carrot Hills entry down to Inverness Apartments, I believe. So, look forward to that, and, um, again, I thank everybody and for the residents, um, particularly in Carrot Hills, who addressed us, I think about two years ago about this. So, they'll be very pleased, no doubt, to see this improvement. And again, thank you for your support.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero nine three fifteen, reallocate monies from Capital Project District Two miscellaneous capital improvement to Capital Project Recreation Parks, Rickaby Park improvements.
So move? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Manzi?
Uh, we have a variety of improvements currently, uh, undergoing there at Rickaby Park. Uh, these resources specifically will provide a water fountain. There hadn't been one, uh, in this particular park, and I'm using some of the district's, uh, miscellaneous capital improvement resources, uh, to, as we make those improvements at Rickaby, add that water fountain.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-one three sixteen, authorize Tremere to apply, accept, and receive funding from the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen for our prevention and safety grant.
So move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-seven three seventeen, ascent, forty-seven three seventeen and three eighteen, that's, or do you want me to take those separate?
Yes, separately.
Forty-seven three seventeen, assent to the vacation of an alley running from South Claiborne Street to South Franklin Street between Government Street and Church Street.
So move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty, forty-seven three eighteen, consider the vacation of right-of-way fee as a condition of the vacation of an alley running from South Claiborne Street to South Franklin Street between Government Street and Church Street.
Move to set the fee at six thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-three three twenty through fifty-eight three thirty-one.
Request to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolution zero-three three twenty through fifty-eight three three one.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Lambert.
Zero, zero-three three twenty and three twenty-one, are reappointing Carlos Spindly and Robert Thomas as part-time judge of municipal court.
Some move?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-seven three... Oh, we're laying that one over.
Yeah, thirty-seven, uh...
Thirty-seven three twenty-three, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premise, is only licensed for Purple Cow on Range Line Road. And thirty-seven three twenty-four, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor, class-one license for Rack 'Em Up on Airport Boulevard.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The owner of the Purple Cow is, uh, up in the audience, wait. Congratulations.
Forty-three twenty-five, three twenty-six, three twenty-seven, three twenty-eight, and three, three twenty-nine and three thirty are declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them repaired or demolished.
So move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions, oh, fifty-eight three thirty-one, assent, assess cost removal of weeds group fifteen hundred.
So move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one three thirty-two through twenty-one three thirty-four.
Request for the suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of resolution twenty-one three three two through twenty-one three three four.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The other CIP resolutions will be laid over for council rules.
Twenty, twenty-one three three three, authorize contract with Goodwood Mills and Kwood for Sullivan Park erosion and field condition improvements professional services.
So move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
Just want to make certain residents in the Lovehead Heights community, uh, that utilize this park know, uh, for many years they've complained about drainage, complained about, uh, erosion on their playing field. The Peters, uh, park teams play and utilize this field. Uh, this contract, uh, will begin the process to eradicate those complaints, uh, along with the other amenity improvements that we're making there, uh, at the Thomas Sullivan Community Center.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one three thirty-four, authorized contract with Watkins AC Struck Design for Tremere Park Challenge Course.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
Yeah, this is, um, good news for the, um, South DIPN. Uh, Tremere Park is one of, one of the major parts in the, uh, South DIP area, uh, trying to bring back life into the area. When I first took council, many people was talking about how dim that park is. Uh, since being on council, we have welcomed B.C. Rain, um, football team back to Tremere Park, uh, we're upgrading some of the stadiums. Uh, we have now just finished paving, um, the, um, parking lots at Tremere Park, and now we are now working on an NFL-style, um, playground equipment out there at Tremere Park. I'd like to thank the administration, um, at COWS for working so hard and diligent, looking forward for more great things to come to Tremere Park in the South DIPN. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one three thirty-five through thirty-seven three thirty-six.
My council rule is these resolutions will lay over for one week.
All right.
Announcements?
Start with Mr. Small?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. On last, um, Thursday, I was, uh, privileged to, uh, speak to the Mirabelle Elementary School, fifth grade, um, graduation, uh, class. It was a privilege to see all the parents and students and faculty so happy at the Revelation Baptist Church. Um, the kids were very excited from being promoted from, um, the fifth grade to the sixth grade. Again, congratulating all in the fifth grade class at the Mirabelle Elementary School for a successful program on last Thursday. On last Friday, I had the privilege to attend the Gil Yard, um, Boys and Girls, um, Club Summer Program for the orientations. Um, and the parents was excited, uh, the kids that came on last Friday were very excited about the, uh, summer program that's coming up. Uh, I'd like to thank the, uh, staff and administration on the Summer Boys and Girls Club, and also this council for helping, you know, have, helping the South DIP kids to have something to do to something to keep them busy. Um, also, um, went checking on Ann Street, uh, one of my main initiatives, uh, since I've been on council. Uh, because as all the rain has slowed down some of the progress of paving Ann Street, uh, pretty much all the hard work is done, just trying to wait until it dry up a little bit before we can put the first coat of pavement on Ann Street. Again, um, that has been a very initiative, uh, of mine. I'm so excited about seeing the progress, um, uh, with Ann Street, looking to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony very soon, uh, on Ann Street. And, um, that has been a baby of mine to, uh, get done while I was on this council. Um, and this baby is Baltimore Street, and, uh, we looking and trying to see funds for it. Um, also, we will be having a district meeting coming up on Thursday, June the twenty-ninth, at the Saint Monica Catholic Church at eleven thirty-one Dolphin Island Parkway, inviting all the citizens of District Three to come out on that evening at six o'clock PM. If anything that you would like to be addressed, please contact my office at two zero eight seven four four one, or email me at CJ dot small at CityofMobile dot org. Again, remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. I just would like to remind everybody again about the District Six Community Meeting, which will be June fifteenth, which is Thursday, at six thirty PM at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. You should receive a postcard, um, for everyone in the district. The topic is public safety, and we'll have the police chief, the fire chief, the public safety director, and, um, it will be an opportunity to hear from each of those gentlemen about what's going on in their departments and any information they'd like to share. But come for questions and comments as well from everybody, and I look forward to seeing as many as you that can make it. So, again, it's Thursday, June fifteenth, six thirty PM. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of days ago, I wrote a letter to the mayor, the director of public safety, the police chief, and all council members regarding a timely, timely release of information pertaining to violent crimes in our city. We want to know, because the media gonna ask us, we need the information. And I was, my request was that, uh, we, that we be informed, um, at the same time that the media is informed. And I'm having to report that I received a call this morning, uh, from the director of public safety, Jim Barber, uh, stating starting today, whenever they issue a news release to the media, a copy of that would, would come to the city council. And, uh, I commend him for that. We don't wanna be in the dark. I'm for, I'm for transparency. Uh, it was a shooting in the Tothamville area a couple of days ago. I found out from the media. I don't need to find out from the media. The police officers were on the scene. I should have been notified immediately after that happened. So, uh, I'm happy to know that, um, they're starting today... So I'm happy to know that, starting today, we will be informed. And in fact, the chief says, not only for violent crimes, but any release that they send to the media, the council will get a copy of it. And that's the way I think it ought to be. I would just like to announce that on June 15th, I will be holding my Trinity Garden Community Meeting at the Dodge Community Center at 6 o'clock. I'm asking all our citizens in the Trinity Garden area to please come and join us at this meeting. We're going to be talking about jobs, job training. I've invited Mrs. Nitra Henderson from the YES Program to come and talk about youth employment and what the city is doing to employ youth in our city. We're going to talk about the CIP program. We're going to talk about projects that's already ongoing. We're going to have someone there from the Police Department to talk about crime, public safety issues. I've, and asked the mayor to have someone at the meeting to talk about blight because about 70% of the questions that's asked to me is all related to blight. And I'm saying not, I've said again, we are not in charge of blight. We're not in charge of overgrown lots, junk cars, dilapidated houses, potholes, flooding, crime. That's all under the auspices of the mayor. In fact, every department in this city is under the auspices of the mayor and except, except for the city clerk right here. Every other employee in the city is under the auspices of the mayor. And this is a rule. If you, if you can't find your way and you can't remember, this is just standard rule. If it requires the city employee to fix what you're complaining about, it's the mayor. If you're going, if you're going to require a city employee to correct whatever you're complaining about, it's under the auspices of the mayor, not the council. 311, that's the mayor. 9112, all the 111s you want to talk about, not ours. But anyway, as can all our citizens to come out, I want to hear, it's, it's your opportunity. We're bringing government inside the neighborhood. City Hall is coming inside the neighborhood and it's your time to tell us what's on your heart and those things we can do something about. We will, I always can advocate. I don't care what the situation, I always, I am your advocate. I can't make it happen, but I can speak up for you. But I can't speak up unless I know. So looking forward to seeing all of you at the meeting on June 15th, Dodge Community Center. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like today to very briefly pick up on something the mayor said earlier today and that was the importance of the Port of Mobile to the economy of the city of Mobile. That, that relationship cannot be stated too strongly. When we look at the big economic development announcements that have been made over the last 10 years or so, which would be Ostel, TK, Walmart, the, the Amazon facility, none of those would have come if we hadn't had a port here. None of them would have come if we hadn't a port here. So the bottom line is what's good for the Port of Mobile is good for the city of Mobile. What's bad for the Port of Mobile is bad for the city of Mobile. And you can either take it a step further and say what's good for the Port of Mobile is good for the state of Alabama and what's bad for the Port of Mobile is bad for the state of Alabama. There's a lot of traffic that comes through the Port of Mobile that is traffic from, from businesses up north that's coming down here and being shipped out of Port of Mobile and by the same token, there's a lot of stuff that they use that comes through the Port of Mobile. It, we, and then, you know, the other part of it is it's not just the direct jobs. It's not just the people that work at Ostel or the people that work at Walmart, the truckers that are going to be taking 600 containers a week from the port out there to the Walmart facility. It's the people that dress hair, it's the people that sell clothes, it's the people that sell cars, it's the restaurants, everything that, 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 that those people that are directly employed by the, by the port buy. So it's a tremendous, it's, it's very, very important to our economy and we need to always keep that in mind. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President. I want to just start by offering my prayers and condolences to the family of little Miss Naomi Jones. While not a resident of the city of Mobile, certainly the impact of her tragic loss has touched all of us in this Gulf Coast region and I'm hopeful that the law enforcement in that community can swiftly and expediently find the individuals responsible for her senseless murder and bring them to justice. I don't have any children, but I've dealt with kids all of my 34 years and for someone so young with so much life ahead of her to be cut down even before her prime, again, is senseless and it's a call to all of us to be even more vigilant, mindful, you know, watchful over our young people because there are some sick individuals in this country, some very sick individuals. And they don't care if they're to your family, anybody else's family. They don't care for themselves and evidently because of that lack of self-care, they don't care for anyone else. One of the programs I'm proud of that will hopefully prevent something of that nature is this new summer program that will be held at the Florence Howard Elementary School for the kids and for the students there at that school and in that vicinity. Starts June 12th through July 21st. First of its kind in this area of our district, so I'm, I'm proud that we're kicking this off, proud that they'll have somewhere safe and productive to spend their summer days and, you know, they just recently got out of school. So let's watch our young people more carefully, you know, look out our windows, you know, call the authorities if you see them acting in, in ways that aren't productive because we normally see an uptick in crime due to school being in dismissal. I'm so happy for Feeding the Gulf Coast and the work that they're doing. I just utilized their, the text and it gave me the three nearest locations. If I could qualify by age, I could go and eat, but I don't qualify, so I'm not going. But if you text that number, was it 877-877?
Yes.
It'll give you the three nearest locations, the times, addresses, and I'd also like that PDF so that we can put it on Facebook and in other places because there's no need for our young people to be hungry this summer. And that concludes my announcement, Madam President.
All right, thank you. This coming June 12th, I'll be holding a district meeting at St. John's United Methodist Church. We have invited a number of guest speakers, including the mayor, Commissioner Connie Hudson, Nick Amberger, and Don Powell with Aldott will be there to talk about the Ziegler Widening Project, which is ongoing. And also, our new captain in the 4th Precinct, we have a, a new captain. His name is William Jackson. He and Chief Batiste will be there as well, but the focus will really truly be on Ziegler as well as Commissioner Hudson's report on the new pay-as-you-go resurfacing program that is coming up. On June 27th, we will be holding our last off-site meeting for this term. We will be at Borough's Elementary School. The meeting will begin at 6 o'clock. That is in District 4. Market in the Park is ongoing. We know we have one downtown, but we also have one out west at Lavereta Park. It is on Thursdays from 3 until 6 and it runs through July 27th. Lavereta Park is just off Old Shell Road, so come on out and pick up some good vegetables and plants and other arts and craft supplies out there. The blueberries look fabulous, the corn, the squash, everything. Come on out and get all of your needs for either the garden or for your table. And just another note, sidewalk repairs are coming to the district. We know we've been doing some sidewalk repairs throughout the city, but now that work is moving into District 7, so I'll look forward to seeing that coming up. And the pay-go resurfacing, I mentioned earlier, those contracts for District 2, which is Commissioner Hudson's district, have been let, so we will be seeing resurfacing coming very soon as well, thanks to the pay-as-you-go program. At that point, if there are no other announcements, I don't think there are, there's nobody left in the audience to say anything either, so we are adjourned.